Welcome back, everyone. It's a little bit before 7:15. We just came out of executive session to discuss the Town Manager's annual evaluation. So, thank you for being patient. We will now move on to general public comments, item number five. If anybody would like to speak, you can come to the podium and speak. Not seeing any. Public comments are closed. Moving on to approval of minutes for November 16th, 2016's regular meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections? Not seeing any? All in favor? That's six to zero. Adjustments to the agenda? I don't see any.
The vote again?
Seven to zero.
Did I say six to zero?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Seven?
Keep them in line.
I'll crack a joke about only counting to four later. Items to be signed at the treasurer's warrants. I'll take care of that with the town clerk as we move forward. Old business, there is none at this time. New business, order number sixteen dash oh seventy-nine, an act on the request to adopt the Cumberland County Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2017's update. And I'll turn this over to the Town Manager.
Yes, if you don't mind, Chief Thurlow is here, and he certainly is more, quite more capable of introducing this matter to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilman. Thank you for the opportunity. I prepared a memo and some background information that was in your packet. This is essentially a process that we have to do every five years to meet FEMA regulations. The town benefits from this because as a local community, this does provide access to some grant funding for hazard mitigation projects and for the public certification. When we have a naturally declared disaster like a hurricane or some of the blizzards that we've had in the past, when FEMA declares a declaration, a percentage of the money that is spent restoring public costs is set aside in a special hazard mitigation fund to go back in after the disaster and upsize culverts and do that type of work to prevent future claims for the government. And to be eligible for that grant funding, we have to keep an up-to-date hazard mitigation plan. Rather than every community have to do it, the county has graciously picked up the burden of a very burdensome process, as you can see if you've reviewed the plan. Scarborough, Mike Scharr and I certainly have contributed the Scarborough-specific information to it, but the rest of it is county work that helped leverage some of our work and get this ready for you tonight. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? No, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chief?
Sorry. It's the, I did get a chance to look at it, or I tried to find it online. Is it, is the 2017 one complete and updated on online, or?
There's a draft of the 2017. It won't be complete in terms of FEMA's actual hundred percent compliance until all of the communities in the county go through the process that you are tonight. They've approved the draft. It's been through several revisions. They've approved the content of it. It will become officially approved once everybody completes this process.
I see. So, that way, it was still a draft?
Correct.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you. And I'd like to open up the item for any public comments. Any public comments? Not seeing any. We'll close public comments. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Comments? Counselor Donovan?
Seems to be a pretty straightforward procedural matter, and I support it.
Counselor?
Yeah, I also support it, but I wouldn't suggest people take a look at it. It's quite alarming in terms of it outlines some risks and how they would be mitigated. And it's definitely an alarming read.
Any other comments? Not seeing any? All in favor? None opposed? Moving on to item number nine, non-action items. There are none. Standing and Special Committee Reports and Liaison Reports. If I can start with Counselor Donovan.
I attended the Energy Committee Meeting today. Chris is the liaison, but I wanted to attend the last meeting as chair. We are rewriting our energy plan. We put a lot of effort into trying to get that process off and running today. We had our new sustainability coordinator present, Carrie Strout, very impressive person, a very bright background. She gave us the opportunity to learn a little bit more about her background, stormwater management, energy efficiency projects. Really going to be a remarkably good addition to the town. I spent the day yesterday with her also working on the composting pilot program that we've been working on. We met at Echo Maine, and of course, you need to have the hauler, pine tree waste, get on board with this, and they are. Echo Maine as a collection point, and then you need to have the garbage go somewhere at a reduced cost and be appropriately used. We took a trip to Exeter, Maine, up north of Anger, to Stony Vale Dairy, and it was truly a remarkable, it's a business model that you would just be amazed by. It's a dairy that then takes all the manure, mixes it with all the garbage, and creates methane by which they then power an electric generation facility and sell power to the grid. They then take the slurry that comes out of this mess and turn it into a fertilizer, comes out as a fertilizer, and they use it over 2,000 acres to fertilize the fields for the crop that allows these hundreds of cows, and just hundreds and hundreds of them, to be fed. So, it comes back, the residue, and you just bag your garbage, throw it in. They have a thrasher that takes all the paper and plastic out. It was just such a remarkable cycle. And they send back this small amount of waste to Echo Maine that burns it as a part of an electric generation facility that Echo Maine runs. So, for those who have been wondering, what are we going to do with our composting? This looks like a tremendous opportunity to be a participant. And all the other communities that we kind of buy for as far as reputation, we're all present at Echo Maine and applauding how Scarborough is a little bit ahead of them. Valmath, Yarmouth, Cape Elizabeth, South Portland. So, it was quite a nice day. Thank you.
Counselor Rowan?
Yes, Historic Preservation Implementation Committee met last night. And I'd just like to say that this is a really small group of really hard-working volunteers, and I'd like to thank them for what they do. Some of the things that we talked about were the cemetery cleanup projects, the, some of the historic boundary markers around town, and finding the location of them, as well as the site list of historically significant properties in town. And specifically, there's a one-room schoolhouse on Holmes Road that is being discussed at present. So, that's an update on the activities.
No committees to report on this, obviously, but thank you, though.
It's so hard. It actually got me laughing. Counselor Sinclair?
Yeah, I only have one, just because of the overlap that we have. But Counselor Hayes and the Town Manager and I all got to meet. We started talking about the Public Safety Building. So, we had our first meeting for that. It went really well, actually. Basically, it was just sort of like getting organized. We did, they did actually, just so people are aware, Counselor Hayes and I are not voting members of that group. We've made that decision going into it. We just felt it was better for us to just sort of be true liaisons for them, resources for them, so that we could also become advocates for them without it sort of mashing in with being also voting members. And I think it's going to actually work out a lot better that way. But, they did vote, and they've decided that Kevin Freeman, who a lot of you know from SEDCO, is going to be the chair of that committee, which I think was a really great decision on their part. Their vice chair is Greg Hanscom, and the recording secretary is Judy Roy. So, I have to say, it was, it's an impressive group of people. We did go around the room and talk about everybody's qualifications, and it's a room full of people that really have a lot to offer. So, I think it's going to be exciting moving forward. And we're hopeful, I know that Peter and I are both hopeful to be reporting back. We do have a pretty hefty schedule. We meet, we are going to be meeting twice a month. The second and fourth Wednesdays at 8:00 a.m. at the Public Safety Building for at least ninety minutes, and we may start adding meetings if we start breaking up into like subcommittees and things like that. So, but the first meeting went very well, and Chief Thurlow actually is helping with the minutes, and has become an incredible resource. So, it's a really exciting project. That's it, for me. Sorry.
Counselor Hayes?
Actually, I don't have anything to update tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Kiazou?
Thanks. Bill covered energy quite thoroughly, so thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. What's talking I have to do? We'll get out of here that much faster. School Board met. They've had a change in leadership. Kelly Murphy is the School Board Chair, and Jody Shea is the Vice Chair. And I'm not sure if Finance was announced or not. It was announced, and Jody is still going to be the Chair of Finance as well. So.
Excellent. Thank you. And I have one report for the library. There is no meeting this month for the library's Board of Directors. However, they did want me to remind everyone that their annual fund drive is underway, and if you'd like to visit their website, you can make a donation through their website for the annual fund. So, that would be greatly appreciated. Town Manager's report?
Yes, thank you. Just to dovetail on Counselor St. Clair's comments, I did attend the Public Safety Building Committee Meeting. I don't intend to be a permanent fixture there, but certainly a resource that I'll come and go as they need me. One thing I do want to get them started in the right direction on is making sure they have the right consulting team to assist them in their efforts. And counselors will be, are aware that we're interested in doing a master plan for the campus behind us here, for the whole municipal campus. And that's, the interest in that is born in a lot of different things. The long-range facility plan, the fact that Public Safety Building is more than just being talked about. We've got recreation facilities for seniors that are scheduled for as soon as this spring. All of those things are coming together at the same time. But in hindsight, we really think it's important for the public safety process to kind of take care of itself before we begin that. I would like to revisit that as soon as we can, and I think that's probably six or eight weeks off, so it's not an eternity. But I think it's really important for the public safety process to be independent and to kind of run its course before we proceed with that other piece. So, I'm excited that they've begun, and certainly pleased to help support them in their efforts. Also, the council's aware, we are in search of additional funding to help with the Operation Hope Program. And we had a good grant opportunity. Unfortunately, we came up short on that. But there is, appears to be some good news at the federal level. There's some significant funding that I think is on the president's desk, so to speak. And we've made connections with both Senator Collins and King's office to help understand how we might access that. So, we'll have a meeting next week, and we're optimistic that might be an answer to us. Just to remind everyone, our interest is really to find a bridge to something better and more sustainable. There's a lot of things that Scarborough PD does well, and they've really exceeded my expectations in this regard, but it's not sustainable long-term. We're not professionals in this industry, but we're pleased to do our part. But we also can't stop in the middle without an alternative to look to. So, we're really looking to find a bridge to something else in the future. Also, just a point of interest, some people on council and perhaps in the public might recall, several years back, we were engaged in a planning process with our adjoining communities and the main Turnpike Authority regarding the so-called GORM East-West Bypass. This intends to look at and solve some of the problems that we have in North Scarborough and areas north of us. For anyone that's tried to get through that area of town in the morning and in the evening, Running Hill Road, 114, 22, it's just incredibly busy. And so, there's a group of communities with Main Turnpike Authority and DOT that are looking at alternatives to help alleviate that congestion. And the MTA is kind of breathing life back into the process. So, we're interested in getting re-engaged, and this might be a good topic for a workshop should it start to gain some traction again. The implications could be fairly significant for us, so it's important that everyone appreciates what's being talked about. Also, I wanted to thank and congratulate Counselor Donovan. I recruited him to serve as a chairperson on the Metro Coalition. Metro Coalition is a subset of GP COG, which is the Greater Portland Councils of Government. This is, that's twenty-eight communities is GP COG. Metro Coalition is seven communities. It's Portland and kind of the first ring communities. And we tend to have some issues in common and some different issues than do the outer communities. And this group has been responsible for a number of things through the years. They conceived of and implemented the Regional Crime Lab, which is up and running and a success, some joint economic development initiatives. And Scarborough's time is up in terms of being chair of this effort, and Bill was kind enough to volunteer in that regard. So, perhaps in the coming months, you'll hear more and more about those efforts. Two last things. We do have the tax appeal mediation scheduled for December '22. This is for the consolidated tax appeal cases. We think it is important to get together and to see if there's a way to accelerate and perhaps settle these. You might recall, law court has finally ruled on all these matters, and they've been remanded back to the Board of Assessment Review without any direction, really. They just said, "Find a reasonable abatement." So, there's a lot of latitude there, and we've been preparing for this. I expect it will be an all-day session. And finding a mediator was surprisingly easy. The first one that we proposed, all parties accepted. He is highly respected. Bob Crowley is his name, has a deep experience in tax issues. But more importantly, he is known to be a tremendously fair person. So, we're really encouraged about getting that process started. And lastly, I just wanted to foreshadow something that may happen as soon as next Wednesday. We had a very light agenda this month, but don't let that fool you. We've got a very full agenda. I've been kind of keeping things at bay so the council can get organized and get its feet under itself, so to speak. But as many of you are aware, we have this newfound interest in multifamily housing in town, and there's a lot of components associated with that. And this council's dealt with any number of zone changes that have allowed this use to occur. But now it's becoming real, and we've got a number of large-scale projects that are waiting to come forward, and each of them will have to come to you for one thing or another. So, staff has been thinking for a number of weeks now that it would be helpful to have a workshop to provide some of the background context, issues of growth management ordinance, how that works, and the permits that are restricted and regulated through that process, our impact fee ordinances, which are companion to that. All of these things are interrelated. And so, we'd love to engage the council as soon as next week, if we could, and without any pressure of taking a vote, but just a conversation, the introduction of the related issues. So, I'll work with Chairman Baybine and look to put something out. But in the interest of time, to make sure everyone has a good opportunity to understand the issues before you ever ask to consider a vote, I really suggest we meet as soon as next week. So, we could, I could poll you tonight to see what your availability is, or we can suggest some things by email, whatever your preference is. But I was looking at Wednesday, next Wednesday night, if that works.
What time?
At your convenience. Six thirty or seven?
Is everyone comfortable making a commitment tonight, or would you rather wait and do that by email?
Want to do it at five?
We're totally at your convenience. Whatever's easier.
At least I can do a six.
I would think an hour and a half might be required to have a full conversation.
I can do it six o'clock on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's great by us. Six p.m. Wednesday, maybe the fourteenth of December. And as a courtesy, we'll invite the Planning Board, Long Range, and Navy SEDCO, just to be in the audience. I think they would equally benefit from just hearing the conversation, but not necessarily be at the table with you unless you need their expertise for one reason or another.
Could you get that list one more time?
Planning Board, Long Range Planning, who's been dealing with this issue for a couple of meetings, and SEDCO. Is there anyone else?
What about the housing lines?
Sure, we can extend that invite. That group's meeting tomorrow.
Would anybody object? Since it is a workshop format, I would like to have maybe the chairs of those committees participate in the workshop discussion, and maybe the other members. That way we're inclusive of them. That's okay? Yes, ma'am?
I do have a conflict on the fourteenth, but if I'm the only one, you should, by all means, go ahead.
We could do it another night. I'm not ready to that date either.
I would have to look at my calendar, and I don't have that here.
Why don't we go by email?
Let me send out some options tomorrow, and we confirm this up in the morning.
Sorry about that.
Confirm it up in the morning. Great.
Thank you for your attention.
Anything else?
No.
And?
Now I know.
Last, actually, it's not on here, but don't we usually have public comments at the end of the night as well?
No.
Oh, we don't? Okay.
No.
I just wasn't sure. Councilmember comments, starting with Counselor Kiazou?
So, two things. First was, we attended the tree lighting ceremony for the town on, I believe it was Saturday, I think it was. Great event. Community Services did a fantastic job. Fire pit, Santa Claus, so obviously a huge draw. Had a long line even after the fireworks were done. There were fireworks there, by the way, just for the record. Very well done, very well attended. Talking to Bruce Gulliver, I think, Gulliver, I think it was, it's a little over four hundred people, but he did say that the Lions, excuse me, the Rotary, I think it was, gave away approximately eight hundred cups of cocoa. So, I think that might be a record. So, very well attended, for sure. And the second thing was, I wanted to do a shout-out to one of Scarborough's own, David Grover, who is a recent graduate of Scarborough. David was the swim captain here last year. He took a gap year to hike the Appalachian Trail and was featured on Bill Green's Green Maine, I believe it was yesterday or the night before, upon his successful completion of that trek. A lot skinnier, but a lot wiser, too. So, congratulations to David. Very great, great family, obviously, and a great experience, for sure.
Excellent. Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, a couple things. I mean, first, it is kind of a shout-out to the Scarborough Kindness Project. Last week, there was a conversation they put on at Wentworth School around civil discourse, and Terry Hayes came down, and it was well-attended, and the folks are there. And Will, I'm sure you'll have a lot more details, so I'll leave it at that. But thank you for doing that. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about is something that's been, it's been kind of sobering times, and it just really troubles me. I'm sure everybody has picked up the news every day. Police officers across the country are being targeted. There's almost a daily shooting. And I mentioned that to some folks in town. Actually, one individual took that and went up to an officer, Scarborough Police Officer, Safety Officer, and just said, "Thank you." And the reaction that he got from that officer was just overwhelming. It was kind of, the officer was just really appreciative that someone said, "Thank you." So, I'm just making an appeal that as other communities are dealing with this, we have some great public safety officials here. We should express our appreciation for what they do. So, I thought I'd just share that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor St. Clair?
Good, thank you.
Counselor Donovan?
We are in the process of doing interviews for consultants for the comprehensive plan. And the interview process was four candidates last week, the Town Manager, the Planning Staff, the SEDCO Director, and I sat in on behalf of the Town Council. And these were outstanding candidates, and so we're in the process of doing the analysis to select them. Craig Friedrich and I met with Matt Sturgis, the Town Assessor, to review and analyze the Senior Property Tax Relief Program, see if there were ways in which we thought we could make it simpler. The report we got back from the Assessing Department from Mr. Sturgis was, they were thrilled with the efficiency of the program and the good feeling that was created by the hundreds of people who came in and participated in it. So, it was very well received. We're going to study some data that we talked about with Mr. Sturgis that he's going to compile. But at the moment, without committing ourselves, we're pretty happy with the way it went. It's a very progressive system, but we want to confirm that it has that progressive element to it, that the poorest people in town are the ones who get the state credit and the town credit. But, so, we're working on that. Avenue Two, we expect the legal opinion to come in in the next week or two. And so, I think that will be an active matter soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rowan?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Peter's report on the Kindness Project and the disability dialogue that we had last week. We, it was very well-attended. Wanted to say thank you to Terry Hayes. Came down from Buckfield, who's the State Treasurer. Came down on our own dime, I wanted to point out. And that we had about thirty to thirty-five people there, and really, it was just kind of an open discussion format about what, you know, what it means to have civil conversation and kind of the impacts on the things that you say to other people. And we had several students from the high school. We had the Town Manager, the Superintendent, Chief of Police, Director of the Scarborough Library, about half of the Town Council, and about half of the School Board. And I thought it was a great turnout. And thanks to everyone who came. Oh, and I'm sorry, and my next comment, carry on. December third was the International Day of Persons with Disabilities. The Secretary General of the U.N. put out a message, and if you'll indulge me for a minute, I'd like to read it. And Secretary General Bond said that ten years ago this month, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Convention of the Rights on Persons with Disabilities, one of the most widely ratified international human rights instruments with one hundred and sixty-nine parties. The Convention has spurred significant progress in commitment, sorry, my keyboard jumped up, in commitment and action for equality, inclusion, and empowerment around the world, with disability being increasingly incorporated into the global human rights and development agendas. This year, United Nations member states have embarked on implementing the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development, our blueprint for peace, prosperity, dignity, and opportunity for all on a healthy planet. With its seventeen interdependent sustainable development goals, the 2030 Agenda is based on a pledge to leave no one behind. Achieving this requires the full inclusion and effective participation of persons with disabilities in society and development. Much remains to be accomplished before persons with disabilities can realize their full potential as equal and valued members of society. We must eliminate the stereotypes and discriminations that perpetuate their exclusion and build an accessible, enabling, and inclusive environment for all. For the 2030 Agenda to succeed, we must include persons with disabilities in implementation and monitoring and use, excuse me, and use the Convention as a guide. On this International Day of Persons with Disabilities, I urge national and local governments, businesses, and all actors in society to intensify efforts to end discrimination and remove the environmental and attitudinal obstacles that prevent persons with disabilities from enjoying their civil, political, economic, social, and cultural rights. Let us work together for the full and equal participation of persons with disabilities in an inclusive and sustainable world that embraces humanity in all diversity. Bond, Kim, Moon. So, while I have my soapbox, I just wanted to point out that the U.S. has signed the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability, but it was not ratified in the Senate. It actually requires a supermajority in the Senate, which is, of two-thirds, which is sixty-six votes. And in 2012, it fell six votes short, which is, I find incredibly disappointing, especially since it was actually based on the Americans with Disabilities Act. And then, I also want to point out that it does call for local governments to think about what we can do to be a more inclusive society. And with that, I'll step down. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Polley?
Yes, so, first and foremost, I just wanted to say thank you to the residents and voters of Scarborough. It's really an honor and privilege to have the opportunity to serve you, and I promise I'm going to work hard. I think Peter and Will both touched on the Scarborough Kindness Project event last week. It was very well-attended. What they did not tell you is that it was the night evening, that it was pouring buckets and buckets of rain. And so, I was especially pleased with the turnout, given the fact that folks would have much preferred to be on their jammies and home. And then, third, and I've learned already, I need to bring my iPad with me because I don't have my notes properly, but someone in the audience may be able to help me. I think it's next- I think it's next week, on December 13th, the group Empower Me is bringing another film to Scarborough. They, if some of you may have attended Screenagers last year, it was very well-done, and I think it's December 13th. Yeah, I think so, that's Tuesday, yeah, at Wentworth, or is it at the high school?
Auditorium.
It's at the high school auditorium. So it's, the last film was well worth the watch and dialogue afterwards, and so I hope those kinds of things, community events, can continue to bring people together and engaging in important conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. For me, a couple of items. First, Counselor Foley, welcome aboard, nice to have you. I'm really excited to get into work with you, and also Counselor Donovan, thank you for running again and staying with us. It's great. I also wanted to personally thank you for being our chairman last year. It was a very successful, very effective, and a very strong year, and it really is attributed to your leadership, and I really wanted to say thank you. It's one that I hope to emulate as Chairman now, as well. I did want to also hand out some items to everyone, if you can hand them that way. What I'm handing out is actually two items that I need back as soon as possible, preferably by Monday if I can. The first is standing committee and liaison appointments. The Chair is required to make those appointments, and then make the recommendations, and have the council approve them at our next meeting. So if I could get, my goal is to actually complete that task by next week, issue a draft to each of you so you can see the full lineup before we actually submit that for a final vote on the 21st. And the second is also a document which you're asked to provide, maybe five areas of attention or focus in our goal-setting. So while we start a new council year, we also have an opportunity to evaluate and assess last year's performance, and we'll have that hopefully in the next month, as well as set new goals in the upcoming year. So think about where we've been last year, if you need documents to see where, what those goals are, manager can send those out to us, and we can go from there. I believe there is some desire to maybe re-engage the consulting team we had last year, maybe not for as long of a session with them, but at least to facilitate the closure, to make sure that we all agree to how do we assess our performance, since we already know now how to set the goals. So those two. The standing committee one, I did want to mention, because in speaking with each of you in advance about becoming Chair, one of the things that is very clear, not only amongst us as a group, but also with our other stakeholders, is that there is a strong desire for stability and calm, in that we have been so successful over the last few years that I really wanted to make notice tonight, because it is such a high-attention committee, the intent to name the following three members for the Finance Committee, so that there's some assurances that we will continue the path that we've already undertaken. Those three members will be Counselor Hayes, Counselor Kiazow, and myself, which is an unusual step, but it's something that I've been asked to take on and willing to do so that there is that continuity from last year to this year with the school board's relationship. And under our rules, the first person named on that committee is actually the Chairperson, and so Counselor Hayes has agreed to be the Chairperson for this year, so I really appreciate that, Peter. We worked very closely for the last two years together, so I know that we're all going to be in a positive direction when we present the budget as a whole, so I appreciate being able to make that announcement tonight. Last, but not least, a couple of things, actually, I was going to start off. I did want to mention, I know a couple of Chairpersons in the past have really focused on some unfortunate passings of citizens, notable citizens, and I did want to mention because it seemed like we had a lot this last couple of weeks, and the three that I wanted to mention, the first is Peter Chadbourne. Peter was an employee of the Fire Department, and he was, no, sorry, employee of the Police Department, and his title was actually Chief of Sanitary Engineering, because he was the custodian, and he was a wonderful person. If you've ever had a chance to meet him, I did a couple of times, and he retired, I believe it was last year, and he passed away after a long illness. So to the Police Department and his family, send our condolences. Also, wanted to send condolences to the Corbo family, retired Marine Resource Officer, Dave Corbo's father passed away, Paul. Paul had been a member of the American Legion, and had really, had lived in Scarborough for a little over 60 years with his family, right on Ashland Drive, brought the family up, and so his passing should be noted, and condolences sent. And last but not least, and there's many others, but Bob Carson, former Fire Chief, Rob Carson's father passed away. Bob was a, I believe, a 50-plus-year member of the Fire Department, working way back when they were just volunteers, and so I know his passing will be felt down in the Pine Point area and across the town, so it's all three of those families that wanted to send our condolences. And last but not least, on a happier note, I wanted to wish Counselor Kiazow a happy birthday. It is his 47th birthday today, and he thought he was going to get out of here without somebody saying something.
That close.
That close. So with that in mind, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Samples.